So this meeting was provided in the following ways. Notice published in the Courier News, notice posted on the Bolton Board of the Municipal Building, notice made available to the township clerk, notice sent to the Courier News and the Star Ledger. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Weissman? Steve, you're muted.
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Tillery?
Here.
Mr. Patel?
Here.
Mr. Reggio?
Here.
Mr. Blount?
Here.
Mr. Hidaka?
Here.
Mr. Minarondo?
Here.
Mr. Riley?
Here.
And Chairman Cahill.
Here. Well, everyone please stand for the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance, flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Canelo, do you have any changes to tonight's agenda?
Yes, we have three changes to tonight's agenda. Alicia Jimenez, 20 Mitchell Avenue will be adjourned until August fourteenth with no further notice. Edgar Lopez on Howard Street will be adjourned until August fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five. He mustn't notice. On switch, fifty-one New England Avenue will be carried to September twenty-fifth with no further notice by the applicant. Those are all the changes that I have.
Okay, thank you. Before we start the meeting, I'd like to make a brief announcement. The Sony Board in Piscataway here is a volunteer board. A lot of the members tonight have worked their full-time jobs today. And now they're volunteering their time this evening for you applicants. So I would ask that both the attorneys and the applicants be as concise as possible, but be brief in the possibility for us to get through this meeting in a timely manner. So I appreciate all cooperation. Let's call item number seven, twenty-five dash ZB dash forty-nine V, Kazi Uden. Is Kazi Uden present?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, I need to swear you in. Could you raise your right hand? Please raise your right hand. You swear that testimony you're about to give should be the truth? Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, explain to the board why you're here, please.
I'm here because I want to actually redo my fence. I want to redo my fence and then I'm requesting the board that to approve my fence to be moved fifteen feet outwards. So that will also remain another like fifteen feet from the water street. Yeah, just to redo the my fence.
Okay, Jonathan, you want to jump in here?
Sure, we're requesting that the fence be brought in an additional three feet from the property line to make it half of what's required for the zone. Eighteen feet where thirty-five is required. Additionally, we're going to condition with the approval of landscape buffer to screen the white vinyl fence along Water Street. And we'll be happy to work with you on the design and installation of that.
Mr. Uden, if those terms are acceptable, we can, I can pretty much tell you we can move forward right now.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. I didn't hear what the recommendation was.
There's two recommendations. We're going to move the fence three additional feet in to make it eighteen feet from the property line. That's the first one. Then the second one is we're going to require plants along the outside of the fence along Water Street.
So I can't, you're saying that I can move the fence how much? Like three feet?
To make it total eighteen feet from the property line?
Instead of fifteen, it's gonna be eighteen. You have to buffer the, buffer the fence with landscape. If you can do that, I can take a vote right now. Any other members of the board questions or comments? Hearing none, I'm gonna open it to the public. Anyone in the public have any comments or questions about this application?
No one, Chairman.
Okay, close the public portion. I make motion to approve this application. Thanks, call roll.
Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Tillery?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Reggio?
Yes.
Mr. Blount?
Yes.
Mr. Hidaka?
Yes.
Mr. Minarondo?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
And Chairman Cahill.
Yes. Mr. Uden, your application's been approved. We'll memorialize it in a written document at our next meeting and we'll send that document to you.
Okay, thank you. Do I need to go to the city to talk to anyone for anything?
No, I'll, I'll email you.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Good night, sir.
Do you want me to drop, drop over the call? Thank you. Bye.
I think we're good. Okay, item number eight, twenty-five dash ZB dash fifty-V, Omar Hagab. Is Omar Hagab present?
Yes, I'm present.
I need to swear you in. Could you raise your right hand? You swear that testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes.
Okay, could you explain to the board why you're here?
Okay, I'm here because, so I've been living in three eighty-two William Street for over twenty years and the fence has been in the same spot. And after I replaced some panels that fell during the storm, I was notified that the fence was too close to the sidewalk. So I'm here for a variance because I'm on a quiet that end street and it's been like this for over twenty years.
Okay, Mr. Mizrahi, could you jump in here?
We're, we're going to request the, the half width of what's required for the zone. So we'd like to see the fence be brought in eighteen feet from Wildwood Drive. What's, we noticed a lattice fence enclosure on the corner. What's inside that lattice fence area? Does that still exist?
Yes, it's empty and I sent Laura a picture of it, but it was very, I just sent it right before this meeting, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Okay, the condition of the shed, is that in, is that in good, good shape? Does it need to be repaired?
No, the shed isn't. I also sent a picture of where I removed it from.
Okay, do you, do you understand if the shed does need to be replaced or substantially repaired? It needs to be relocated to a conforming location?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then in addition to moving the fence, we're also gonna require the landscaping along Wildwood Drive.
Okay, could you explain what that means, sir? Do I have to plant something?
So in the staff report, we break it down, shrubs spaced three to six feet on center. And then those shrubs need to be between eighteen to twenty-four inches in height. You can install them, it's an easy size to install yourself or you can get a landscaper to help you. We can work after the call on what type of shrubs, but we, we give you a good leeway so that way it can be something that you'd also like as well.
Okay.
All right. Mr. Hagab, if you can agree to those terms, I can say we can move forwards right now.
So I, is there, there's, is there anything I can do about the distance of the fence?
Yeah, unfortunately, even, even if it was installed fifty years ago, it's, it's in a not conforming, it's an illegal fence. The fact that it got caught twenty years later is just, you know, unlucky for you at this point, you know? But it, it's something that the township normally regulates. Is it thirty-five feet, Jonathan, normally?
Yes, for this zone, it's thirty-five feet.
Right, so you know, it could, it could be worse.
Which is in line with the front corner of the house. So that would, to give you an idea of how far that would be coming in.
Okay.
All right, so eighteen feet shrubs and if anything happens to that shed, it cannot be replaced in that spot. It's gotta go someplace that's conforming, okay?
Yes, sir.
No problem, great. Any members of the board have any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'm gonna go to the public. Anyone in the public have any comments or questions about this application?
No one, Chairman.
Okay, close the public portion. I'd make a motion to approve this.
Make a motion.
Who's second? I'm sorry.
Artie.
Thank you.
Thank you, Artie. Please call a roll.
Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Tillery?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Reggio?
Yes.
Mr. Blount?
Yes.
Mr. Hidaka?
Yes.
Mr. Minarondo?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
And Chairman Cahill.
Yes. Your application has amended, has been approved. We'll memorialize this in a written document at our next meeting and we'll send that document to you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Good luck, sir. Item number nine, twenty-five dash ZB dash forty-six-V, Edith Spruill. Is Ms. Spruill present?
Yes, yes, I am.
Good evening. I need to swear you in. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. Could you explain to the board why you're here?
I have a fence and a shed and it's impacting the easement at the corner of my house. And I'm asking for a variance, I think it's a zoning variance.
Okay.
Okay, the, the shed is, excuse me, the fence is located down the middle of the easement area. So, and it's existing, so we're not anticipating any interference with utilities. The shed is ten point seven feet in height, which is a little bit too tall for what we require. Is it in, is it in good condition? Is it gonna need to be repaired anytime soon?
It's in good condition and I have no leaks or anything. So right now it's in very good condition.
Okay, so just like the last applicant, if it does need to be repaired, it's gonna have to be brought down in size and be moved to a conforming location.
Okay.
You're going to need to enter a memorandum of restriction in order for any permits to be issued. So all that means is if we need to access the easement area, you're responsible for removing the fence, the shed, or anything else that's in the way.
Okay, I agree.
Okay.
Okay. That's awesome. Thank you, Ms. Spruill. Any other members of the board have any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'm gonna go to the public. Anyone in the public have any questions or comments about this application?
No one, Chairman.
Close the public portion. I'd make a motion to approve this app. Please call a roll.
Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Tillery?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Reggio?
Yes.
Mr. Blount?
Yes.
Mr. Hidaka?
Yes.
Mr. Minarondo?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
And Chairman Cahill.
Yes. Ma'am, your application's been approved. We'll memorialize this in a written document at our next meeting. You don't need to be present for that. We'll mail that document to you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Have a great night.
Okay, thank you. Shall I sign off now? You want me to stay?
No, 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 you don't. We have to be here, you don't.
Sign off.
Okay, I don't wanna cut anybody else off. Okay, thank you.
Laura, I'm jumping over ten, right, Jim and Laura? Jumping over ten?
Yes, right to eleven.
Okay, let's go to item number eleven, twenty-five dash ZB dash forty-three-V, Talak Raj, Raj Sony? Talak Raj Sony? Is the applicant present?
I saw him on earlier, Mr. Sony.
Mr. Sony, are you present?
I don't see him. I did see him when we first signed on.
Well, let's jump over him. We'll come back to number eleven. Like I said, any interest of expediting this meeting, let's jump over to item number twelve, which is twenty-five dash ZB dash forty-eight-V, Eric Pakansky?
Yep, that's me.
I need to swear you in. Could you raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes.
Okay, could you explain to the board why you're here?
Yes, I'm applying for a variance for a fence trying to put in my backyard. My house is on a corner lot, so the side fence would be going within the, the front yard setback. So I'm just trying to get it to the same as the neighbor who's directly across the street from me, who's also on the corner.
Okay, Jonathan, busy man tonight.
Mr. Pakansky, this is gonna sound very familiar. We're gonna request half of what's required for the zone, so that would be twenty-five feet from Crestwood Street property line where fifty is required. That's from the property line, not from the curb.
Okay.
Okay, and then we're also gonna require a landscape screen as well. So those are the only two conditions that we have for this application.
Okay, if it's a shorter fence than the six feet that I'm requesting, does that change how close to the property line it can be?
If it's a four-foot fence and fifty percent open, you can go up to the property line how you have it shown in your diagram.
Okay.
And if you're considering changing it, I would go for the variance for the six-foot fence, which you're presenting right now. And then when you apply for your permit afterwards, you can propose a four-foot fifty percent solid.
Okay, got it. And then also just to check, because the neighbor across the street has the same fence and is directly on the property line, there's no.
Likely, likely an illegal construction.
Yeah, it happens a lot where the neighbors have an illegal fence up. We can't grant you permission to put up an illegal fence because they do. They'll probably be getting a visit from Piscataway's Code Enforcement Department.
Okay, and then also just one more question too is on the landscape buffer, is it possible to put it inside the fence so that the deer don't eat it or?
We'll work together on deer resistant selections, but the intent is to minimize the, the visual impact of the white vinyl to the neighboring properties.
Okay, got it.
There's stuff on the market that deer do not eat and a lot of times Jonathan will recommend that type of shrub or brush. So there's, there's ways around it.
Okay. Sorry, yeah, I was just gonna ask.
No, you go first.
Okay, no, I was just gonna ask, so to confirm, the closest with the six foot that I could go would be twenty-five feet from Crestwood Street?
Twenty-five feet from the property line.
Okay.
So it from the curb, I believe it's ten feet from the curb to the property line, so it'd be thirty-five feet from the curb approximately.
Approximately, okay.
So we can move ahead, we can move ahead on that tonight, approve it. If you change your mind and decide to go with a four-foot fifty percent, you can put that fence up on the property line.
I could put that on the property line if it was four foot.
Fifty percent.
And fifty percent, okay, got it.
So you have that option, okay?
Okay, would I need to come back to the board to request that?
Four foot, fifty percent solid, no.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Sound good?
Yep, agreed, thank you.
Any members of the board have any questions or comments for Mr. Pakansky? Or with this application? Hearing none, I'm gonna open it to the public. Anyone in the public have any questions or comments for this application?
No one, Chairman.
Okay, close the public portion. I'd make a motion to approve this application. Can I get a second?
Oh, second.
Second.
Please call a roll.
Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Tillery?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Reggio?
Yes.
Mr. Blount?
Yes.
Mr. Hidaka?
Yes.
Mr. Minarondo?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
And Chairman Cahill.
Yes. We will memorialize this in a written document at our next meeting. We'll send that document to you.
Thank you.
Have a good night, sir.
You too.
Laura, can you tell me if Mr. Sony is on?
Yes.
Okay.
He has to unmute himself. Mr. Sony, you're muted. There you go.
Hi, good evening. Good evening, I'm sorry, I could not connect before.
It's okay, we're glad we doubled back to you, sir. Okay, Mr. Sony, I need to swear you in. Could you raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give should be the truth? Do you swear to tell the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. Name, please?
Talak Raj Sony.
Thank you. Could you explain to the board what you'd like to do here?
Yes. You know, we would like to, we would like to do the extension for the home. So my dad is eighty-four years old. So right now, we have a problem, like he cannot move too much. Only with the wheelchair, you know, we can move him around and.
For a minute.
Extension for, and we are asking.
Hold on a second, hold on a second. What is your name?
My name is Ranjit Sony, RJ Sony.
Okay. Could you raise your right hand?
Yes, please.
Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes.
Thank you, go ahead. Please continue.
Okay, so we want to do the extension for the home. So I can move in with my dad and my family. So, so we are looking for extra two hundred twenty-three square feet. So we can make two additional bedrooms and extend the kitchen.
Okay. Jonathan, could you jump in here, sir?
Certainly. The, the floor plan, Mr. Sony, is a little confusing to us. We're hoping you can clarify a few things.
Sure.
You're gonna have to enter a deed restriction that this is for residential use only. Let me just open up the plan here.
That is no problem at all. We will do that.
On the first floor, on the first floor plan, it appears that there's a the lower level plan, it appears that there's a side entrance into a lounge with an office space. Can you explain that, please?
Yeah, you know, I'm like, I'm a CPA. So usually clients, you know, drop me the papers. So I was thinking to put my office downstairs, but I'm just gonna keep the office only and not the, clients will not be coming to meet. We can make the test, we will not make the entrance from that side then.
The entry, no, we wouldn't allow the business to operate inside the dwelling. It would have to be in a separate location. It would not be allowed.
Yes, business will be, I have a current office. So then I will not, of course, I will have the office in there, but I'm not gonna be meeting the clients there, so it's gonna be home office for my own use.
Understood, okay, that's acceptable. So the removing the lounge should help you reduce the footprint. We're not going to allow you to go over your building coverage. You are at, hold the record here, twenty-three point nine percent proposed building coverage. We, we're not gonna go over twenty percent, okay? So you're gonna have to revise your, your floor plan.
But then, then I will not have the complete set because the kitchen is gonna be only nine feet from upstairs. Because that's the whole reason was for the, going to the variance because this way I will have the extension to the kitchen for like all.
There's other variances that can be granted without allowing the coverage to be granted, like your front yard, your rear yard, your shed, your garage needs to be provided to a conforming size.
Shed, I can remove it because shed, I don't even need it.
Okay, that'll help with your building coverage. We're, we're not going to, we're not going to allow over twenty percent for the building coverage. So there needs to be, you have a bathroom with every single bedroom? That could be reduced?
No, but then the problem is the, the other main bedroom, it's gonna be smaller in area because my, my kids are working from the home. So we need the, like, everybody needs a desk and table in the room, so they don't have the office place.
I understand a desk and table, but we're talking about restrooms attached to the, attached to the bedrooms. If you do not wanna revise the floor plan, we can allow the board to, to vote on the matter, but I'm, I'm trying to come to a compromise.
The only thing is like, you know, we are looking for the homes everywhere. And right now, we could not succeed in getting the home. So we can sell this, so the only option now, this one is the only option we have left with because wherever we bid, somebody overbid us. So that's the problem. I don't know if you could help us out in getting this thing done. I mean, we are ready to do any other things, testimonies, everything is acceptable.
Well, clearly it isn't because Jonathan's made three suggestions and you don't want to, I mean, does every room have to have a bathroom? I mean, my, my house, I have two and a half beds, five, five bedrooms. So everyone in my house doesn't have a bathroom. So I'm just saying, you have to compromise with us. You, you're asking for a big piece of the pie and we're gonna give you some pie, but you gotta, you gotta work with us.
Right.
The whole thing.
Just if you can.
Chairman, maybe I could interrupt you a second. We had cases, cases similar to this where the applicant comes and meets with the township staff and I, my recollection is most of them get resolved in that process.
I agree.
And it may, may, make sense for this applicant to sit down with Jonathan and see what his options are.
Is that meet with him?
I think, I think trying to do it on the fly right now, he's not gonna be satisfied.
Yeah, I, I can read the, the temperature of the board and it's, it's not gonna fly tonight, Mr. Sony, with, with what you want and with what the township's proposing. However, John said something that makes a lot of sense. The two of you sit down, you go over each aspect of the application. Jonathan will tell you where the township is willing to compromise and then you're gonna have to compromise and we'll get this thing done. So I would say put this off. How many meetings in August there, Laura?
One.
One, just one.
August fourteenth.
How loaded is that?
Eh, just as loaded as this one, but it doesn't matter. Somebody messes something up, so we could do August.
Okay, Mr. Sony, I think that'd be the best course right now, to be honest with you. Let's move this application to, to next month. But between now and next month's meeting, you come into Jonathan's office and you sit down and, and iron this out.
Okay, sure.
All right, because I don't think you'd be happy with the, with the outcome if we voted on this tonight.
Sure.
If anyone here, project Sony application is, it is going to be adjourned until August fourteenth with no further notice from the applicant. The only notice you're receiving is my announcement here tonight.
Thank you.
We'll see you in August. So thank you.
Very much. Thanks for your.
Let's move on to item number thirteen, Richard Truong. Twenty-five dash ZB dash fifty-three-V.
Hi, good evening, gentlemen.
Sir, I need to, I need to swear you in. Could you raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes.
Okay, you put your hand down, explain to the board why you're here.
Yes.
You can put your hand down. Okay, explain to the board why you're here.
Yes, I'm here because I plan to install the fence around the house. And it just happened that one side of the fence would be in the middle of the easement and I'm applying for the variance.
Okay, Jonathan, sound like a broken record tonight, I'm sorry.
We, we believe this easement is well suited for the, the fence to go down the middle of it. So we're requesting a utility markout prior to the fence being installed, just to make sure we're not hitting anything underground. We won't require a landscape buffer and you will also have to enter a memorandum of restriction. So as I explained before, we will not issue any permits until you sign a memorandum of restriction stating that if the township needs to access the easement, you're responsible for removing the fence, shed, or any other improvement in that area.
Understood.
Okay, and the condition of the, and the condition of the shed, does it need to be repaired or replaced anytime soon?
Well, the shed, when I purchased the house and moved in last year, it was in a very bad shape. So the only thing left from the shed is like, you know, the, the platform. So a few blocks left there, so.
Okay, so we will not allow you to rebuild the shed in the same location. You will need to come in for a permit to put up a new shed and then you will show us where you will put it in a conforming location, okay?
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any, any members of the board have any questions or comments? Nothing? All right, gonna open it to the public. Anyone in the public have any comments or questions about this application?
No one, Chairman.
Okay, close the public portion. I'd make a motion to approve this application. I'll second. Thank you. Call the roll.
Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Tillery?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Reggio?
Yes.
Mr. Blount?
Yes.
Mr. Hidaka?
Yes.
Mr. Minarondo?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
And Chairman Cahill.
Yes. Your application's been approved. We'll memorialize it in a written document at our next meeting. We'll send that document to you. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Have a good night. Item number fourteen, twenty-five dash ZB dash fifty-five-V, Amanda Miskov. Is Amanda Miskov present?
Here.
Okay, I need to swear you in. Could you raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give should be, do you swear that the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes.
Okay, could you explain to the board why you're here?
I am asking for a variance, surprise, to put up a six-foot vinyl fence on a, on a corner lot. We live on the corner of Montgomery and Evans is the issue there.
Okay, again, broken record. Jonathan, you wanna jump in?
We're requesting twelve feet where twenty-five feet is required off of the property line from Montgomery Street. And landscape screening along the fence frontage on Montgomery Street. And the shed will need to be relocated once it's time for it to be repaired or replaced.
Got it.
Is that okay with you, Ms. Miskov?
Yeah, just like why twelve feet? Just wondering.
Twenty-five feet is required, so we're, we're offering half of the required amount, yeah.
Okay, any other members of the board have any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'm gonna open it to the public. Anyone in the public portion have any questions or comments about this application?
No one, Chairman.
Okay, close the public portion. I'd make a motion to approve this application. Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, please call the roll.
Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Tilery?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Regio?
Yes.
Mr. Blount?
Yes.
Mr. Hidaka?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Ellie?
Yes.
And Chairman Cahill?
Yes.
Ms. Miskov, your application's been approved as amended, we will memorialize it in a written document and we'll send that document to you. Good luck.
Okay, thank you.
Have a good night.
Have a good night.
Go to item number fifteen, twenty-five dash ZB dash fifty-six V, Griselda Garcia?
Yes.
Good evening, I I need to swear you in, could you raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
It's true, yes.
You're you're gonna have to lower something down, you're getting a lot of feedback.
You're getting feedback here, Griselda.
A lot of feedback.
How's that?
Much better.
Well, that's worse. You you're on the phone and you're on your computer.
Yes.
Shut the phone off then if your computer's.
Okay. Perfect. What's that?
Of course, could you explain to the board while you're here?
There you go. I don't think she heard you, Jim.
Ms. Garcia, can you explain to the board why you're here?
Um oh my God, I I guess you could, do you hear me now?
Yes, yes.
Um well, the reason I'm here is uh for variance that started with uh my deck with that I would like to build. Um and in that variance also the shed and um the fence, I guess, was at it. Um so the was requesting to build a twenty by twenty deck. That seems to not um have the approval. Um so. That's pretty much the three things, the shed, the fence. Um those things.
And the deck and the deck, understood. Let's let's get the township expert to give his um side of the story over here if we could, Jonathan?
Yes, so for the fence and the shed, uh we'll have you enter a memorandum of restriction. Just like the other applicants you've heard this evening. Uh we will not allow any permits until that memorandum of restriction has been signed. Uh can you can you tell us a little bit more about the shed, is it in good shape?
Well, I bought the house twenty years ago, the shed is in the same place that it was as I would wooden shed is in. You know, I mean fairly good condition for the years that it's been there and it's. It's it's good.
Okay, then we'll allow it to remain, once it's time to replace it or to substantially repair it, we'll ask it to get moved to a conforming location.
Okay.
And then uh is the paver patio still present on the property?
It's it's old, but it's still there.
Okay.
It's you know, it came when I bought the house, so it's very.
Understood, so the deck is encroaching thirteen feet into the rear yard setback. So it's a twenty-five foot rear yard setback and the deck is s- sited twelve feet from that property line. Uh we would like to see that brought in a little bit more considering the size of the the patio paver as well.
What do you cons- what would you suggest?
We can um. Maybe we can maybe we could say a twelve-foot deck?
You mean twenty by twelve?
Yeah.
Can we do twenty by fifteen then?
I don't think that's a problem, I I yeah, I think I think the board would look favorably upon that, ma'am.
Twenty by fifteen would have a seventeen-foot rear yard setback where twenty-five is permitted.
That's more than uh com- you know, that that's a good deal, man.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, John. Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Is that does that sound like something you you uh you'd agreed upon?
Uh well, I I would have liked a little more, but if that's what you.
Everybody likes more, always happens.
If that's what you are um you know, allowing, then that will be good.
It's it's a good deal, ma'am, I've been doing this twenty-five.
Thank you very much.
Okay, any other members of the board have any questions or comments for this application? Hearing none, I'm gonna open it to the public. Anyone in the public have any questions or comments about this application?
No one, Chairman.
Okay, close the public portion, I make a motion to agree uh to approve this application.
I'll second it.
Thank you, can I get a roll call?
Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Tilery?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Regio?
Yes.
Mr. Blount?
Yes.
Mr. Hidaka?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Ellie?
Yes.
And Chairman Cahill?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Your application as amended has been approved. Uh we will memorialize it in a written document in our next meeting, we'll send that document to you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Let's move on to item number sixteen, twenty-five dash ZB dash twenty-eight V, Dalton Black? Is Dalton Black present?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Mr. Black, I need to swear you in, could you raise your right hand?
Yes, sir.
Do you swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes, sir, I do.
Thank you, explain to the board why you're here, please?
Um so I am doing a garage which already had a variance, I believe in two thousand eighteen. I was able to start my construction, my contractor, my concrete contractor um saw a deficiency in which it didn't look good where it was positioned originally. So he moved it in towards my property line as opposed towards the street, he pushed it into my property line. And so we're off four feet by the original variance, I believe it's about four feet. And I was asking to see if I can use the foundation concrete, we poured fifteen yards of concrete with half-inch rebar. And it was inspected, it was approved, it was poured. And when we when we did the foundation location, it wasn't exactly where it should have been, so I am requesting the variance for those four feet.
Jonathan, can you jump in here, sir?
Yes, so uh you're correct, twenty eighteen, you were approved for an eight hundred and sixty square foot accessory structure. Uh what you came in with this application is almost eight hundred and eight square feet, so. I feel comfortable, you know, it's a sizable concrete slab, I feel comfortable allowing that foundation slab to remain. Uh but have you conformed with the size of the structure that you got approved under in twenty eighteen? With the setbacks, the height and the location?
I am complying, I believe I'm four inches from the neighbor's house um as it was. The the fence of the neighbors wasn't exactly where it should be um placed. Um all my neighbors are taking a good amount of space from my yard, which I really don't mind. I just would like to be able to keep the the solid structure that I did. And no repair is gonna be as as strong as as a poured concrete foundation as it is right now. So it it I believe it's like a hundred and eighty, two hundred feet additional. It wasn't on purpose, it was completely on accident and the repair would be extremely costly and uh very time consuming.
Do you have uh? Are the are the are the? Footings for the uh vertical posts for the garage? Is that rebar exposed and tied into the slab?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And it was inspected and approved previously.
Right, the installation, the installation was inspected, but that wasn't a zoning, that wasn't a zoning review. So that's why when you submitted the when you submitted the ASBIL, that's when it got picked up here, so. It's been was reviewed in that sense, doesn't give you approval. Um I. I I just I don't feel I don't feel I understand this was a mistake that was made in the field. Uh with it being or not a mistake, it sounds intentional that if the contractor wanted it in a different location, but I um. I don't feel comfortable providing that that relief tonight.
Okay. I can. Uh this this applicant was granted a variance for an oversized shed back in two thousand eighteen. Uh he's now before the board uh in two thousand twenty-five for a significantly larger shed than what was granted in two thousand eighteen. Um he he just has not provided proofs uh that satisfy the land use law in New Jersey. To be awarded variances for this size shed or garage.
Thank you, Mr. Caneley.
Um yeah, I don't feel comfortable with this either, I I don't granted, it's not your fault, but it's your contractor and that's something that maybe you should take up with him. And and private litigation maybe, uh but I uh any other members of the board have any questions or comments? For Mr. Black? Hearing none, I'm gonna open it to the public. Anyone in the public portion have any questions or comments about this application?
No one, Chairman.
Okay, close the public portion, I'm gonna deny this application, make it a suggestion, can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, can I get a roll call?
Mr. Weissman?
Uh yes is in agreement with the chairman.
Yeah, yeah, yes on the motion.
Yes.
Mr. Tilery?
Yes, on the motion.
Mr. Patel?
Yes, on the motion.
Mr. Regio?
Yes, on the motion.
Mr. Blount?
Yes, on the motion.
Mr. Hidaka?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Ellie?
Yes.
And Chairman Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Black, we will memorialize this denial in a written document and we'll send that document to you for your review.
Can I something before this is over, sir?
Sure, please.
So um if I do with uh in enclose it to the specs of the original plan, I'm still four inches or three inches off from one of the neighbor's house. Is there any way you can approve me if I enclose it to the correct uh length that the width for the four four inches be be um? Be acceptable, because it is four inches.
Jonathan? You muted, John.
Yeah, I put my I put my drawing away, I have to take it back out, so four inches. Four inches from the property line?
Four inches from the neighbor's property line, correct, so it was supposed to be seven feet, I believe it's a uh six points four, six point six. It's it's inches away from the one of the neighbors.
And that would that would result in how far of a distance on the other side?
Uh the other side is, I believe, two inches off, but one side is about six, four to six inches off, so one side is a problem. Um as I spoke to one of the inspectors and based on the the length um of it, I'm willing to reduce it with my contractor. But the other side, I would have to pour another ten yards of concrete to repair that. For for the four inches or six inches difference. So I'll enclose it from the length, but the width, the width is fine, it the the width, I it's harder for me to enclose in length.
I I understand it'd be more difficult to rectify, but it's it's still uh it's still not what was approved.
Okay. And I wouldn't be able to after all this with the variances, just get those get those four inches of 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 pardon? So I can reduce the the space to exactly what you had given me in two thousand eighteen?
Uh Mr. Chairman, I defer to you.
Yeah, I I'd rather negotiate this during the meeting, perhaps we can adjourn the matter and allow Mr. Black to meet with Jonathan. Uh and then we can listen to Jonathan's uh opinion and decide what to do at the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Black?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so anybody here in the Dalton Black matter is going to be carried to August fourteenth with no further notice. Except this announcement. We'll uh get a date out to him and let them talk. Yeah, Mr. Black, you'll meet with Mr. Mizrahi.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, have a great evening. Uh item number eighteen, twenty-five dash ZB dash forty-seven V, James Byrow?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, how are you?
How are you, sir?
Good, thank you.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Caneley. Uh good evening, my name is Jordan Friedman of Estoll and Sullivan. We're the attorneys for James Byrow, the owner of the premises located at three forty-seven Rock Avenue. Uh we're here tonight uh seeking a certificate or approval of a certificate of nonconformity. According to property tax records, the premises were constructed in nineteen fourteen. And uh they've been listed, uh well, some time ago, they were listed as a two-family. Um or two-unit multifamily dwelling. And that was on the nineteen fifty-six property tax card. And uh as a three-family dwelling in subsequent years. Today, the property is used as a three-family dwelling. Each unit uh has a separate entrance, mailbox, kitchen, bathroom. Um there are separate connections for electric, gas and sewer. Uh the property has a wide driveway which permits the parking of two vehicles for each unit. Uh township has taxed the property as a three-family dwelling. It has also issued certificates of occupancy on that basis. Mister uh Byrow acquired the property in nineteen ninety. Uh at the time of the purchase, uh the property was used as a three-family as it is today. The property is located in the R seven-five zone. As I said before, we're here uh to get a uh certificate of nonconformity if approved. Um in connection with any approval, the applicant proposes to convert the dwelling back to a two-family dwelling. And to continue to use it as such. Uh the Mister Byrow believes that the structure and proposed use qualifies as a nonconforming use in structure. Pursuant to NJSA forty colon fifty-five D dash sixty-eight. And requests that the board issue a certificate of nonconformity. In support of the application, uh we submitted various documents, including municipal tax records. And they include the nineteen fifty-six tax assessment record uh listing the property as a two-family. The nineteen seventy-four uh tax assessment record listing the property as a three-family dwelling. And a more recent assessment record uh which lists the property as a three-family as well. Also, uh we've we've included uh in the application, the two thousand seven deed. Uh you should know, as I said before, Mister Byrow has owned the property since nineteen ninety. But when he became an American citizen, uh he changed his name and in connection with that. Uh changed his name from uh Tara Byrow to James Byrow. We've included site photos, uh floor plans and copies of certificates of occupancy. Which were issued in nineteen eighty-nine for apartments one, two and three. Uh Mister Byrow was here with me and if the board uh cares to hear testimony from him, I'd like to ask him some questions.
Sure, please proceed. And Mister Byrow, can you raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes.
Name and address, please?
James Byrow.
Address?
Three one-one George Street, South Main Field in New Jersey.
Thank you, go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you. Uh Mister Byrow, uh are you the owner of three forty-seven Rock Avenue?
Yes.
And for how long have you owned the property?
Back in nineteen ninety to now.
Okay, and uh at the time uh that you purchased the property, where did you think you were buying? What kind of what kind of dwelling do you think you were buying?
A multifamily.
And how many units did you believe that the property had?
Three.
Okay. Um. Mister Caneley, do you have, do do all the board members have the documents that were submitted?
All all the board members have all of the documents that were submitted, it's quite quite a file that they checked.
Okay. Mister Byrow, uh are you familiar with a survey that was prepared on your behalf?
Yes.
And uh specifically, I'm referencing referencing a survey by Parker Engineering and Surveying. Dated November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four.
Yes.
And do you have a copy of that in front of you?
Yes.
Um does the survey, which we submitted to the board, show a house, a McAdam driveway and a gravel parking area?
Yes.
And are those, uh, three things, uh, still at the premises?
Yes.
Um. Now, in our application, uh, we, uh, we put in there that there was a garage. Is there a garage?
There is no garage, I purchased the property without a garage.
So, the, uh, the inclusion of any reference to a garage was, uh, a typographical error on our report, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Um. Uh, Mr. Byrow, uh, we also submitted floor plans, um, of, of, uh, apartments in the dwelling. Are you familiar with those floor plans?
Yes.
Did you prepare them?
Yes, I did.
And you pre, you prepared them, um, on graph paper?
Yes.
Okay. And, uh, did you prepare a, a plan for apartment number one?
Yes.
And is that the ground floor apartment in the dwelling?
The first floor.
Okay.
Yes.
And did you also prepare a floor plan for the apartment on the second floor?
Yes.
Okay. Um. Did you also prepare a floor plan for the basement area?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Caneely, um, that is something I'd like to introduce as an exhibit. We did not submit it, uh, prior to the ten-day deadline. May I share my screen?
I received it earlier today, we'll mark that as A-one with today's date.
Thank you. Would you like me to put it up on the screen for everyone's benefit?
Uh, Laura, did all the board members get that today or just me?
Uh, I honestly don't remember. I had twelve applications today, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, you can share your screen for that.
All right, I'll have him, uh, describe, uh, the floor plans and I'll save the basement one, uh, for the end. Um, Mr. Byrow, can you, uh, describe, describe for the board what you depicted in your, uh, floor plans for, uh, the apartment on the first floor and the apartment on the second floor? Can you describe what's, what's in, uh, the apartment one floor plan?
This is the bedroom. This is the bedroom. This is the kitchen. And this is the living. And here is the bathroom.
Okay. Um, could you describe, uh, the contents of apartment two as depicted on, uh, the floor plan you prepared?
This is the kitchen, bathroom, bedroom, bedroom, and the living room.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna share my screen.
Please do.
Okay. Turn to the next page. All right, Mr. Byrow, on the, on the computer screen, uh, the, the board has a copy, uh, or can see the basement, um, floor plan. Can you describe what you have depicted in the basement floor plan?
Yes. This is a step on the first floor goes down to the basement. This is an open area. There's a window here, a window here, and there's a water meter here. As you stepped out, there's a door here, and this is the laundry room. This is an open space here. You come around in here. This is a door. In here is the utility rooms. Two hot water tank, three furnace, two electric panel, two gas meter.
And who has access to the basement?
Only the fourth floor apartment, uh, tenants.
And that is not used, uh, for living quarters? Is that correct?
No.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Chairman, would, is it okay if I, uh, stop screen sharing because I'm done with this exhibit?
That's fine, be it, please.
Mr. Byrow, on your behalf, we also submitted, uh, some pictures of the site. Can you turn to that?
Yes.
Page in your pocket. Okay. Mr. Byrow, are you, are you familiar with these photos?
Yes.
Did you take them?
Yes, I did.
Uh, about, when did you take these photos?
Uh, back in June of last year, June or July.
Okay. Um. So, on the first page, starting on the left side of the page, because there are two photographs. Can you describe the picture on the left side of the page?
Yes. This is the front of the building. The front step, who walks up in the porch, and there is a, a left and a right side door. The left door is for the apartment on the first floor. The right side door is the apartment for the second floor.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I just want to make sure that, um, you're reviewing, or at least you're seeing the pictures in the order in which they were presented in the application. Um, because the pages were not numbered. So, um, I, I hope that description, um, matches with what you think you're seeing.
I, I think that his testimony was, uh, more than clear, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Byrow, on the right side of the page, uh, could you describe, uh, what that picture depicts?
Yes, this is one of the building. The front porch. That's the first floor. The second floor is where the three windows is, and the third floor is where the two windows is.
Okay. Could you flip to the next page?
Yes.
All right, on the left side of the page, um, there's a picture, could you describe, uh, what's depicted there?
That's the front of the building on the, on the right side, along with the side of the building on the right side.
And on the right side, I'm sorry?
The second floor is, you can see there are three windows on the right side. And the third floor, you can see one window on the third floor with two windows in the front.
Is that, is there anything else you want to add about that picture? Or should we move on to the next one?
We can move on.
Okay, on the right side of the page, there's a picture, could you describe the contents, uh, what's depicted in that photo?
That's the side of the driveway of the building, along with the driveway. And the first floor, you got the four windows. The second floor, you got the four windows. The third floor, you got the two windows.
Is there anything else you want to add about that picture?
No.
Can you flip to the next page? Okay, on the left side of the page, there's a picture, can you describe?
That's the back of the building, the first floor, there are two doors there, one window. Up on the second floor, there are three windows, along with the back parking lot of the building.
And, and those cars, uh, that are depicted there, uh, have permission to use?
The you, the tenants use it, uh, the parking lot.
Okay. On the right side of the page, there's another picture, could you describe what that depicts?
It's a parking lot, along with a tenant's car and the two doors in the back of the building. And the one window is for the first floor. And on the left side, you can see a little, a door there to go down to the basement. On the second floor, there's three windows there, along, on the roof on the top.
Is anything there about that picture?
No.
Can you turn to the next page? On this page, there are two more pictures, do you see the one on the left side of the page?
Again, this, this is the, on the backside, this is the right side of the building, along with the driveway. You got four windows on the first floor, four windows on the second floor, two windows on the third floor. And you got a back step with two windows in the top. One windows show on the bottom, first floor.
Okay, and now on the right side of the page, what does that photo depict?
That is the right side from the front, or you can see the left side from the back, along with the fence of the next door neighbors.
Okay. Can you turn to the next page? This page has two, uh, pictures, can you describe what's depicted on the photo, in the photo on the left?
The photo on the left is the two doors in the back, along with the two steps, one window on the first floor, three windows on the second floor. And the right side of the picture is the, the step that goes up to the second floor.
And that's from inside the building?
Yes, inside the building.
Okay. And then on the next page, there is one photo, and what does that depict?
This is inside the basement.
So, that's a stairwell that goes down into the basement?
To go down, yes.
Okay. Do you have any other comments about the pictures?
No.
Okay. Um. Regarding, uh, the utilities that service the building, um, uh, is there hot water heaters in the building?
Yes, there's two hot water heater and three furnace.
Okay. And are there, are there any air conditioning units?
They use window units.
Okay. And is the building metered for gas and electric?
Yes.
And, uh, how so?
Pardon me?
How many meters are there?
There are two meters, electric meters, and there are two gas meters.
And, and, uh, one meter serves?
One meter, one meter served the second and third floor. One electric meter served the second and third floor.
Okay.
One meter served the first floor. One gas meter served the first floor. One gas meter served the second and third floor.
Okay. And, uh, uh, water, uh?
One ga, one water meter, which I paid the water meter bill.
Okay. Um. And have we had an opportunity to review, uh, the township's tax records regarding the property?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the board has the tax records, I don't think you need to go through them. I, I know that they, they say that it's a two-family and at times a three-family. Uh, what we do need some testimony on is, it's currently used as a three-family. What steps are going to be taken to remove the third unit?
I, I get to understand from the township that the three forty-seven Rock Avenue is not zoned to be as a three-family in that area.
So?
So, they are the one who told me to get, start to do this and do without the third floor.
To answer your question as well, Mr. Caneely, uh, all three levels are inhabited by tenants, uh, in connection with an approval. Uh, the, the, the tenant on the third floor, uh, will be vacating the premises. Um, there, there's no pending eviction, there's, uh, there, there are no proceedings to make that happen. Uh, just to be sure, I'm giving you the fullest answer that we can. But in order to, uh, convert this back to a two-family, uh, uh, Mr. Byrow will take, you know, all steps necessary to ensure that it is used only as a two-family, uh, dwelling.
What would be, what would the third floor be used for? Storage?
Yeah, storage. No more, no, I'm gonna remove the kitchen and just leave it open.
And the doorway that would lead to that third floor, would that, would that be taken off and sealed or?
No, I can remove it, it's a part of the building.
Okay. Proceed, please, if you have any more. And I believe removal of the kitchen is, is key.
I think you also should add that, that
Yes.
That, that area becomes storage for the second floor unit as the basement is the,
First floor, yeah.
Base for the first floor.
Makes sense.
And just get it on a, get it on a plan that's part of the file.
Are you in agreement, Mr. Byrow?
Are you gonna address the accessway to this property?
What, uh, what do you mean? Uh, could you?
You and I discussed this afternoon, you and I discussed this afternoon, the driveway doesn't have an easement to either this property or the adjoining. And it's my opinion that it has to have something there to ensure access. And I, my suggestion was that you pursue that with your neighbor. And it would be a condition of approval. If it's, can't be done, you would have to come back to this board and explain why. But I think for both your standpoint and community relations, you really need to have an easement with your neighbor that you both can use this driveway. Because the way it stands now, I mean, you can't put a fence down the middle because you couldn't get to your parking lot. But the neighbor could. Well, that's my recommendation, I don't know if you've discussed it with your client or not. But, um.
No, we, we were fully prepared for your comments. Um, to, to add to the discussion, the survey shows that the, uh, the property line, uh, goes right down the middle of the McAdam Drive. Um, and will, will you permit the condition that you have to get a easement? And if not, we, we come back and explain why?
I would say yes.
The answer is yes, fine.
Thank you, John.
I have no other comments, Mr. Caneely.
Thank you, sir. I believe that Mizrahi may have a comment?
Yes, uh, a deed restriction is gonna be required for this to be maintained as a two-family dwelling. Uh, your application stated this was going to be, you're seeking, uh, nonconforming use for a two-family dwelling. Um, that, condition to that will be the removal of the kitchen on the third floor. Uh, we'll also condition an inspection to demonstrate that this has been done. And, uh, I, I agree with John Chadwick's comment on the cross access, cross-access easement.
Yeah, there, there's, there's no problem with the deed restriction and the other conditions.
Great. Anything else, John?
No. Thank you.
Oh.
Any other members of the board have any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'm assuming that's, that's your, um, testimony right here, I can take it to the public?
That, that's the close of testimony and?
Let's, uh, put it in the public, anyone in the public portion have any comments or questions about this application? Laura, anything?
Sorry, I forgot I'm muted, no one, Chairman?
No, good, okay, close the public portion and I would make a motion to approve this application with Mr. Chadwick's observation and, um, the changes that were made. I, I say yes to approval. Can I get a second?
I'll say.
Call her, call her up, please.
Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Tilley?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Regio?
Yes.
Mr. Blount?
Yes.
Mr. Hidaka?
Yes.
Mr. Medrondo?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
And Chairman Cahill?
Yes. Your application for a certificate of nonconformity for two units has been approved. We'll memorialize this at our next meeting and send a copy to you.
Thank you very much.
Good night, gentlemen.
Good night.
Okay, item number nineteen, twenty-five Okay, item number nineteen, twenty-five-zb-oh-five-V, Gendo JL Auto Repair.
Good evening, Board Chair and members of the board. David Versade from Bob Smith and Associates here for application twenty-five-zb-oh-five. The property is located at thirty, thirteen hundred West Seventh Street, block one-twenty-four, lot three-point-oh-one in the GB zone. This is a continuous, continuation, sorry, can't talk tonight, a continuation hearing from the April twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five board hearing, where the board graciously allowed us to adjourn to work with the township's professionals and come up with a site improvement plan where we can make the site more functional and more appealing to the neighborhood. Since that last hearing, we've made major site improvements, and we submitted a new plot plan to the town for review, which demonstrates a bunch of changes to the site, including removing streets, removing entrances from one street, adding landscaping, and so forth. There are a number of variances that we are requesting for the site, but for the sake of brevity, I won't list all of them.
Thank you.
We do have them from the last hearing. Just to refresh the board's memory, though, this is a site that was a gas station, automotive service station since nineteen forty-seven, and sometime in the past, this gas station was removed, so now it is just an automotive service station. And that is essentially what the applicant is seeking here tonight, a variance to continue the use of the automotive service station. Tonight, I have the applicant to my right and the applicant's translator and friend to my left. I also have our engineer who did the new plot plan, and I have the planner. I believe the planner's testimony was concluded at the last hearing, and I do have the engineer that can testify to the changes that were done to the plan, if it will appeal to the board.
I don't know if that's even necessary, quite honestly. I'd like to have Jonathan jump in with his new observations with the site impact.
Yeah, I'll agree with David's comments. It's extensive updates. I think if we're able to get a developer's agreement for phasing of some of these improvements that we're asking for, we would be happy to see all of the items on the staff memorandum addressed. Two points to make the item number six on the report for the number of vehicles that can be parked on the property at any given time. We will not allow more than five vehicles. We want to be very firm about that. And lastly, item number nine, the easements, if approved, these easements need to be recorded within three weeks of the resolution being memorialized.
Mr. Versade, is that in agreement?
We can agree to both of those conditions, yes.
Okay, great. We can move on from there. Any other members of the board have any questions or comments?
Just a comment quick, Mr. Chairman. The report that I made for the last meeting, all of the recommendations that I had made have been complied with.
Awesome. Thank you, Chad. John, I appreciate it. Any other members of the boards have any question or comments? Hearing none. I'm going to open it to the public. Anyone in the public have any comments or questions for this application?
No one, Chairman?
Okay, close the public portion. I'd make a motion to approve this application.
I second it.
Okay, hold her role.
Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Tilery?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Regio?
Yes.
Mr. Blunt?
Yes.
Mr. Hidaka?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Ali?
Yes.
And Chairman Cahill?
Yes.
Thank you.
We will memorialize it at our next meeting, but get those easements taken care of by the time we do that resolution, so that you don't have a problem.
Absolutely, we'll do. Thank you again.
Good night, everyone.
Have a good night.
Okay, let's move on to item
Good night, thank you.
Adoption of resolutions from the regular meeting of June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five. First resolution, Finco Property Holdings LLC, which you voted to approve, Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Tilery?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Regio?
Yes.
Mr. Hiduka?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Ali?
Yes.
Second, Harun Merza, which you voted to approve, Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Tilery?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Regio?
Yes.
Mr. Hiduka?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Ali?
Yes.
Next, Amitav Roy, which you voted to approve, Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Tilery?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Regio?
Yes.
Mr. Hiduka?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Ali?
Yes.
Next, Manish Patel, which you voted to approve, Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Tilery?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Regio?
Yes.
Mr. Hiduka?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Ali?
Yes.
Next, Parkway Plastics, which you voted to approve? Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Tilery?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Regio?
Yes.
Mr. Hiduka?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Ali?
Yes.
Finally, Mary Jo Barnaskey, this was a resolution of dismissal for lack of prosecution. Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Tilery?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Regio?
Yes.
Mr. Hiduka?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Ali?
Yes.
Those are all the resolutions I have for this evening.
Mr. Caneely, excuse me, Michael Cruz? That was from the June twelfth meeting?
Okay, we have Michael Cruz.
Twenty-five-zb-twenty-seven.
I do not have the voting record on that one. So, if you were not, I'm going to call your name if you were not present to this at same place. Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Tilery?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Regio?
Yes.
Mr. Blunt?
Yes.
Mr. Hiduka?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Ali?
Yes.
Chairman Cahill?
Yes.
Those are all the resolutions that I have for this evening.
Thank you.
Item number twenty-three, adoption of minutes from the regular meeting of June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number twenty-four, adjournment. All in favor, say aye.
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 Have a great night, people. Enjoy the rest of the summer.
See you August fourteenth.